7:01 this evening, we'll go ahead and get started. This meeting is called to order. We begin with the roll call, please.
Council Long?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Here.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Council Ratliff?
Here.
Thank you, and for those of you who don't know, Council Hires is not here because I had a baby. If you would, please stand with me. Jake Adams from the First Baptist Church will provide our invitation.
Maybe.
Do you see Jake?
For Chief King.
Chief King, would you mind?
I do not mind at all. If you'll bow your heads, please. Hymn of grace and reverence, Father, Lord. Thank you once again for gathering together to do city business in your work, Lord. Keep us all with the same heart, the same mind, as we move forward with the agenda items tonight, Lord. And just thank you for providing us with the city that we live in, the country that we live in, Lord, and the freedom that we have. Help us always to remember, Lord, that we're all working for the same goal, which is to make Talalcoa the best it can be. Just lead, guide, and direct us, Lord. Forgive us where we fail, and in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, join, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The Girl Scouts were scheduled to be here for their plaid ceremony this evening, but had to call and cancel, so we'll get them in on a future date. Public comments. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes speaking time, and the total of all comments from the public shall not exceed fifteen minutes. Preference will be given to Talalcoa residents, and in compliance with Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the City Council on any issue or topic raised by speaker during this public comment period. Would anyone like to address the public or the council? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. The items placed on the consent agenda, so members of the City Council by unanimous consent can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Any item proposed on the consent agenda not meeting with the approval of all council members will be removed and heard in regular session. Council, is there anything you'd like to remove?
I apologize, can we point out Scrivener's area without removing it from the consent agenda? I was going to bring this to your attention over the weekend, and I forgot, I apologize. Okay, I'd like to remove item F.
Are there any others to be removed? If not, do we have motion?
No.
Motion is second. Do we have roll call, please?
Council Long?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Recognition years of service for marching boys. Christopher McPurr. Are you here, Mr. McPurr?
Yes.
All right, let's step forward. We've got fifteen years service to the community. Do we have a report from the library?
It seems to be time to move along quickly, so this is a very short report for you all today. Just to let you all know, we will have another language exchange on March 11th, that evening. And this is a time that our literacy department works with NSU Spanish group, their club there, to help the Spanish speakers. They discuss, they play games, both in English and Spanish, so it's a good time for them to work together on that. Now, so far, I know you all like statistics. In 2020, the library sold thirty-four programs for school-aged children, which are the elementary age we're talking about. And since spring break's coming up, we are getting ready for a couple of special programs for them. One of them will be a STEM program, one of them will be a STEAM program. And in addition to that, we're also going to have the Irish dancers coming on St. Patrick's Day. The library's been working with the 2020 public census task force, and so the first week of April, we will have library computers that will be set aside for people to come and complete their census. And a community census worker's there, you know, to be able to help them also. But if you know anybody who has that need, please pass that message along to them. Do you have any questions?
You've been busy.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. A report from the Chamber of Commerce?
She went to the car to get her zip drive, and I don't know if she's going to make it back.
She's going to swing around. She's going first. Okay. Tourism? You want to go first?
I'd love to.
We're having techno, which is difficult.
Okay, we have been crazy busy, but I kind of wanted to do a little bit of a review for everyone, because some people don't know exactly what we do, if we really do anything, and some people are totally up to date on what we do. So I thought, I'm just going to do like a little recap. Some of our priorities for 2019, I'm just going to go through this really fast, because it's just a recap of last year, was to make our social media presence and impact up locally and regionally. And what that means is just to bring local events to, a little bit more to the front, as well as regional issues. And we did that. Our numbers were great. The distribution increase of our visitor guides was absolutely phenomenal. In fact, the state, TravelOK.com just called me yesterday, and they're completely out of three thousand visitor guides from last year, which is amazing, because the year before, we had a ton left even, so that, we totally scored on that. We also chose the kit packages, which I'll go through a little bit later. Participate on a larger scale with local conferences and groups. And what that means is, like the little gift bag that's shown here, we made those for big conferences, big groups that were put on by NSU, Cherokee Nation, or whoever, high school, that sort of thing, we handed those out by the hundreds. So that was really a plus. This is just kind of a recap. For TravelOK.com, we had nine thousand twenty-one requests in 2019 versus three thousand five hundred and forty-one requests in 2018, which is an increase of three thousand five hundred and forty-one visitor guides. And that's just the request, that's not the distribution for the travel centers and so on. And then we're included in these kits, the outdoor camping and so on. Another thing that we did last year that was really a positive addition was, we started displaying our visitor guides with certified folder display. And just through March through May and August through September, we distributed six thousand eight hundred of those. And then the locations are on there, and you guys have a pack up on those too, if you wanted to look at them. January, we still have the January numbers, I think I kind of went through this in January with you guys, because we don't have the February numbers yet. But it was an all-time record request year for TravelOK, or request month. Like, for instance, the outdoor camping kit, there was three thousand eight hundred and fifty four distributed for the month of January versus a hundred and eighty-two for the month of December. I mean, those numbers are just absolutely incredible. Our website, this is something I was really, really happy with. Our website numbers have been great, and I think part of that is because we've got a new updated website, which before was very slow, there was lots of videos, it just took forever to upload. So for one of the numbers I was really happy with, our bounce rate has decreased by thirty-six percent, which, that is a decrease of thirty-seven percent. So that was definitely a step in the right direction. Our users went up a hundred and forty-six percent over December, so that was really great. Some of the other priorities that we really tried to work with is making Talalcoa a year-round destination versus just like the spring and summer. And so we started our bucket list, which is spring, summer, and fall. We've also been promoting Talalcoa as a hiking destination and an international bike tour destination, as well as a fall foliage destination. And we are now listed on all of the TravelOK.com for shirts too, which we really weren't before, but we have a very strong presence there now, especially with the fall foliage. I'm working right now on some bike runs for the motorcycle kit that's coming out, so I'm hoping that that's a little bit stronger this coming year on that, but our fall foliage has really been increased. These are the bucket lists, if you guys ever get on our website, you can pull these out, print them, check off the different things. If you guys wanted to, you can actually do a competition, send in your photos, and we give out prizes for that, whoever sends the best photos and so on. And some of the things we would like to improve upon, that we're really working hard at, is exposure for area stakeholders, and that is with our event support process and follow-up reports. So we really wanted to step out with a little bit more heavier presence on local events like Redfern and so on, and also with the sports and recreation. And then, some of the things we're really proud of for 2019 were our Red Dead Merit Award, we won that for the best social media campaign. Our 2019 SIR Award, which was for the impact that we had on the water and the quality of water production. And then we also won the Arts Supporter of the Year for 2019 from the Arts Council of Talalcoa. And then, we have Tidying Tenkillers coming up March 27th, 28th. If you haven't registered, go to www.tidyingtenkiller.com. I hope you guys have all registered. If you haven't, you could do that right now. And then, one other thing, and I didn't put this on the slide, but you guys, I put it in your little packet. The Polar Bear Plunge is coming up Saturday, which is great, and I'm starting, like, a very slow start on this, which is bad, so I was just going to announce that we have that coming up. So everyone should have a presence in that, would be fantastic. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Thanks.
Are we ready for Chamber of Commerce, or not yet?
One second.
Talalcoa Main Street?
I'll go ahead.
I sure can.
Obviously, it'll be a little more time.
Did I get it in your glitch, Gina?
I did.
I tried not to use the pink and gold ones. Okay, so a little bit of update on Main Street. We have officially moved into our new space at 504 North Mesquite Avenue, right next to our state line cyclory. Within just a few short weeks, it has proven to be a great choice of a space. We get people coming in daily, it's been a great exposure for us, and people know where to find us, so that's been a great thing. Hence why I gave you the business cards, because that's kind of our new address on it. Our, one thing we are implementing right now is our Maestro Community Manager. That is kind of an internal program that we can use. It's a software that will help us gather data for, to help us better track occupancy rates, square footage of spaces downtown, historical aspects of those things, as well as keep track of our volunteer hours and things like that. So we have our new Vista now through AmeriCorps, she has begun and is doing a phenomenal job. So that's kind of her project, is to start collecting all of that data and getting that in place for us, so that's good. Redfern, we're in full swing there. One thing I would like to touch on with what Gina said, we have reached out to Tourism for their event support, thank you, sorry, event support, and that way we will be getting a new movie screen. And so hopefully we'll be able to have that, well, we will have that in time for Redfern, which will also carry in through movies in the parks, so we appreciate them very much for that. What else? We submitted fifteen, over fifteen nominees to the Oklahoma Main Street Association for awards, and we should know by Friday if we have any of those that will continue on to the top three. I think that's all I have for now. I also attached for you a reinvestment report, a reinvestment report for 2019. This is something that I submit monthly to the Oklahoma Main Street, that just to kind of give you guys an overview of what that kind of looks like. We did hit twenty-four and a half million, almost a half million, this year, so that is from the time we became a Main Street community up until now. So we're very close to hitting that twenty-five million mark, and they will be presenting an award for the twenty million mark. Hopefully, we'll get that on the next couple of agendas, so someone will be coming down for that. So if you have any questions, I know you don't really have time to look over it right now, but if you do have any questions, just reach out to me, and I'd be happy to answer them. And then keep a little Redfern map, because we'll talk about that in a minute.
We appreciate this.
All right, thank you for your time.
Congratulations on your move.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, for allowing us to be up here and present. We always try to start with our number update. So for February, basically, we have three hundred and sixty-three total members, three hundred and nine of those are businesses, and fifty-four individuals. This past month, we had twenty-six renewals and six new members. Sorry, I can't cooperate this thing. Delby's Holiday Market, Hutchins Law, Meredith Auto Group, the NSU Jazz Lab, which, that is amazing, if you all have not been in there, you should go and attend their jazz festival that's coming up soon. Bridge Printing, new owner. Talalcoa Coalition, a new company. Okay, so that was the end of our new members. Our upcoming event is Wednesday, March 4th, is the Empowerment of Perspective Through Our Women in Business Lecture. Angela Tinsley will be presenting, March 4th, 11:30. You could still call tomorrow or register online at talalcoachamber.com. Then we have, go back, two more. Okay, Legislative Focus, March 13th, 11:30 at the Choda Center at Cherokee Casino. This will be hosted and sponsored by Cherokee Nation, so we invite you to be part of that. That morning before will be our AM Live at Talalcoa Daily Press. So everyone's invited to come and network, that is a come and go, so for those who worry about that hour, even if you arrive at 8:25, you're fine. So drop your children off, come join us, and get to know some of your neighbors here in Talalcoa. And then also, March 26th, State of the Community, 11:30, NSU University Center Ballroom. Sponsorships and tickets are available, you may go online at talalcoachamber.com, or feel free to give us a call, and we will help take care of you. We are also looking at bringing a leader cast program this year. So we will be making that decision tomorrow, whether we are doing a spring program called Positive Disruption with Magic Johnson as one of the featured speakers, or whether we're moving this to the October, to an October event, which will be called the Ripple Effect, and it's more of a women's leader cast program. So we're, they brought leader cast to Talalcoa about four or five years ago.
2015.
And so we're excited to bring that back and make that a part of our leadership training in Talalcoa. So that event planning's underway. We said save the date for May 7th, that would be the Positive Disruption. We just found out that they do have one in October, so we're not sure what we're doing yet, but we are excited about bringing that on board. And that is it for now.
Thank you very much, Amy. Any special reports from any city departments? If not, we will move on to discussion, possible action on items removed with consent agenda, which was item number F.
I apologize, but I think that should be in the DOS, D-O-S-S. Is that correct, Amy?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I know it's started the weekend and I forgot. Yes, I would like to make a motion that we correct the Scrivener's error and approve as presented with the said adjustment.
Motion is second, and we have roll call.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Ratliff?
Yes.
Council Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number seven, special presentation recognition for exceptional actions related to fire located at 324 State Street to the following individuals. Chiefs, and I'll turn this over to you.
Mayor, Council, citizens? Tonight, I don't have microphones, I'll just speak loudly.
And we already talked about that.
Special presentation tonight will be recognizing the following individuals for the acts they performed on February 7th, 2020. Individuals Jonathan Waters, Betsy Morgan, Dennis W. Davis, Sergeant Brian Qualls, Patrolman Justin Leatherwood, Patrolman Michael Gray, Captain Kenny Barnes, and firefighter Zach Fraser. On February 7th, 2020, approximately 5:40 a.m., Talalcoa Fire Department received an alarm of a structure fire located on 324 State Avenue. Upon arrival, we found a broken structure fire in a single-family dwelling. Before our arrival, the neighbors, Betsy Morgan and Dennis Davis Jr., attempted to rescue Mrs. Bonnie Ray Martin from inside the burning home. Due to the immense heat and injuries sustained during their efforts, they were not able to reach Mrs. Martin. Neighbor Jonathan Waters also noticed the fire and responded to assist in whatever way possible. Upon learning Mrs. Martin was still in the structure, he located her near the front door and rescued her from, in disregard for his own safety. Mrs. Waters sustained grave injuries, too grave for her to survive. About this time, Talalcoa Police and Fire units arrived on scene. Where Captain Kenny Barnes and firefighter Zach Fraser, along with those members of the TP Talalcoa Police Department, Sergeant Brian Qualls, Justin Leatherwood, Patrolman Michael Gray assisted aid. They went above and beyond the call of duty to try to help the lady. The citizens that were there had sustained injuries and went above and beyond the call of duty for a citizen to do what they did. It was heroic, the efforts that they put forth to try to save Mrs. Martin. Mrs. Martin passed away shortly after in Tulsa, she was lifited to the hospital there, and it is with great pride and gratitude that we recognize the amazing people tonight for their efforts and what they did to save another person's life. I have some awards over here, and Chief King does as well. And if I call your name, please come up, where we can present you with the award. Jonathan Waters, Harrison Wood. An act of bravery, Betsy Morgan. Act of bravery, Dennis Davis Jr. I don't know if Captain Kenny Barnes has made it here tonight, he's been out on scene and unable to get loose to get here. But Chief Baker will receive his award on his behalf, and we'll make sure he gets it, but he's on scene right now, trying to make it back. Firefighter Zach Fraser. And Chief King has presentations for his officers.
He has three of my officers that were on scene, or some of the first ones on scene. I believe the first one that arrived there for emergency services with Patrolman Michael Gray, and tonight he's receiving the Police Meritoria Service Medal. So Michael, you'll come forward. He's a big fella. Also, the Police Meritoria Service Medal to Sergeant Brian Qualls. And the Police Life Saving Medal to Patrolman Justin Leatherwood.
The efforts that these folks made were exemplary and outstanding, and makes me proud to be a part of the youth, of our people, of those who pondered existence and were willing to lay down their lives. As John 15:13, greater love hath no man than that this man laid down his life for his family.
You did it well. Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Community truly is about the people who live here and support each other, and I'm so proud of everyone who received awards tonight, and of those who support those who received awards tonight. Does anyone else want to say anything?
Just one point of privilege, if we could, I'm sure that these folks that we recognize now may want to exit the building now and go about their way, so if we give them just a moment.
We'll be glad to pause for a few moments.
I would also like to say that Mr. Waters, seventeen years old, he performed... I would also like to say that Mr. Waters, 17 years old, he performed that rescue, and he left early because he didn't want to be late for it. I told him a few years' time and we'll clean him up.
We're going to pull item number 10 up on our agenda this evening. Discussion possible action to approve the upgrades needed for tractor trucks and waive the sealed bids as required by the City of Talquaw, Superintendent Chris Armstrong.
Yes. You guys got it in the package, the three quotes that we got. What do these trucks need? Are there dual tippers on the back, so they serve both sides of the road? These are turnkey jobs, so one person will put them on, another, same person will put the controls for the hydraulic, and it's close, it's in Pryor. Instead of going to Oklahoma City, like the very back page, or, well Pryor is up there too, but they're not a new way dealer, and we have new way packers, so my recommendation is that all rates LLC. And it's about a three week wait time.
We only got one page, Chris. Are you referencing more than one page?
I was going one page.
We only have this page, page 22 is over.
And so these are different than what we looked at the other day, though, right?
Well, yes. The one that you seen when you came out to the plant, that's the automated system, like fully automated. What we're doing now to keep costs low is automated.
So we've still got to be there to slide it over and then...
Yeah, like the two guys on the back of the truck, they'll grab the cans, take it to the back and hook it to it, and then hit the levers and double and bring it back down. This is the way to get into the automated system without spending as much money, because we're looking at a truck that's going to cost $280,000 for it fully automated, and then you're going to look at the cost of containers for everybody at one time, so.
Yeah, I remember saying there's three and a grand for the truck.
A lot of moving parts, just it goes a lot more.
Okay.
I know we're going to get asked this because it says under here budget item no, because I know my friends in the back are going to be ready to ask.
Well, this is what it is.
I just said it, you know it, right there, right there.
Well, this isn't a budget item, but it's under, it could be under vehicle maintenance too.
Okay, and there's money available under that.
There is budget within that department, it's reality.
If this motion were to be made, we would have to state that correct grant within the motion?
I think so. I think you're an absentee administrator, but the other two bits will show that.
And to my understanding, Grant, the ability for us to waive the sealed bid is a difference in code and ours and the state, is that right?
That's right. The city has more strict requirements in the state law.
One of those things that hasn't been updated in the form.
I would, this is asked, but I might please help from the council. Is there a state contract for this kind of agreement?
There's not. There's a state contract whenever you purchase the truck, fully equipped, ready to go, but when you're doing a add-on to the vehicle, there's none. The best we can do is the no tax, obviously, since we're a municipality and stuff like that.
And to your earlier question, yes, ultimately, we will have to start replacing our tractor trucks.
Yeah, back about 2013, I believe, '12, we were given a grant for TPWA when they went natural gas, and they bought all our trucks at one time. So naturally, all our trucks are having the same problems at the same time, so.
What's, where you think the value of those are right now, roughly, of the trucks that you got currently?
Right now, it's really hard to put a number on it, because a lot of people that want to buy these one original parts and everything, and like we've had to do some modifications to them, get some custom parts. But they do have a lease purchase program that we're looking into as well, so. Well, it's not lease purchase, it's a buyback program, they call it. It's every three years. We, we'll have it for three years, and then if it's all original parts and everything, they'll buy it back for about $150,000, so roughly maybe half for a buyback. And then you keep rotating them out, in and out.
Tag them.
Yeah, because a refuge truck is really like five to six years, just because it's every day, same thing, every time, so.
Thanks, Chris.
So would we need that account number for our motion?
The most recent. 6300.
6300?
1115656300.
Whoa, 300, 115.
656300.
656300, and that's called maintenance.
That is, I call it the shop account, but it's the maintenance account. And the way we have it, the way we have it staggered would be like every three weeks we'll send one in, because right now, Allen and Sue, I think they're down there before, and they've seen our fourth backup, which isn't really a backup. It's kind of like hold your breath and like, let's get through the day. Yeah. So with that being said, with us rotating these, we can sell 15 eventually, like in, like a trade-in to get us a fourth truck to where we have the same truck in the whole fleet, because 15, which is the number of the truck, takes all different parts, so it's not really fleet. It's not good for our stock, for our filters and stuff, so.
So we're good with that, Allen, so you take that out of the... Are you ready for my motion, Grant?
You're satisfied with this?
I'm satisfied with what I saw, it looked comfortable. And I will make a motion that we purchase as recommended from All Rights LLC in the amount of $29,349, I'm sorry, $29,340 to be paid from account number 1115656300, maintenance account. Did I cover my basis, Grant?
And approve the waiver of this...
And approve the waiver of the sealed bid as required by the City of Talquaw.
Is there a second?
Second.
As I motioned in second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Now, item number eight, discussion possible action to approve the Redfern 2020 road closures. Chief King?
I'm not sure why it says...
Now, this is news to me, but...
I'm not sure why it says here, Mr. King, try. Try me more of what was going on and...
Jamie, Jamie?
Chief King. Okay, so I, earlier in your little packet that I gave you, this is an old map from last year, so don't take in account any of the extras. But basically, we're asking for the same road closures as we did last year. We are asking to close off Morgan Street beginning at 5:00 p.m. on Thursday evening. We have one business, RJ's, that is on that street, that we wait until they close, and then we shut that down so we can go ahead and move our food vendors in. We moved our food vendors in last year on Thursday evening, and it was so nice to be able to get them out of the way and not have to do that at 5:00 a.m. in the morning on Friday. So continuing to ask for that, as well as Moskowitz Avenue. One little tweak that we did this year, it's been done in the past, but last year we didn't, but now we'll met, is from Going Snake all the way down to Chocataw. And then the festival will actually end right there in a little alleyway right next to the Spider Gallery. I actually think they call it Chickasaw or some sort of, I don't know. It has the same name as one of our others. So that's where the festival will stop, but we'll go ahead and block off that road at Chocataw because we will put a small stage there, so just for safety reasons, we'll go ahead and block it completely at Chocataw. That will be beginning at 5:00 a.m. on Friday. And then Water and Park Avenue, again, those are the same as last year, closing those at 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. only on Saturday for the car show. If you don't mind giving your blessing on that, that would be fantastic. Or if you have any questions, shout them out.
I'm going to go back and talk to the...
I'm blocking, there's microphone.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Further discussion? No, roll call.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine, discussion possible action to increase budget due to revenue received from Cherokee Nation for purchase of special ops equipment for long-term time. Chief King?
Mayor, council, thank you. This is an annual contribution we receive from the Cherokee Nation councilors that cover our jurisdiction, so it's a check in the amount of $15,000 for the police department to buy equipment, that with the grant that I've got. What I plan on buying is reupping on our body cameras. We didn't, we cut those out of the budget last year and they need to replace, so we got almost all the way there between those two contributions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? None, roll call, please.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Item number 11, discussion possible action to approve the proposed purchasing card policy for City of Talquaw. Mr. Jeff?
This is a direct result of recommendations made by the auditors from the audit board, as we found, and I believe our city treasurer has also reviewed this information. Yes, in the, in the purchasing, in the purchasing manual under the policies and procedures, this is definitely in response to the audit, but the P-card is actually, the policy on it is two sentences in which it has kind of open and a lot of weakness by the two sentences that it has, and the new policy will provide some safe and sound procedures to follow on the P-cards. What the word? The two sentences? Yeah, it was, "City purchasing cards are the property of City of Talquaw and issued to individuals for authorized purchases only. It is the responsibility of each department head to properly control and monitor credit card use by employees," which is pretty a lot of lateral movement.
So this is a significant...
Significant, yes.
Thank you very much for letting us do this. I would like to make a motion that we approve as recommended.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? None, roll call, please.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 12, discussion possible action to lift the moratorium to advertise and recruit part-time laborers in Parks Recreation Department.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. This is just kind of gearing up for the summer, spring and summer season and grass growing. As you can see, some of the, they're resignations with some full-time employees, but right now, we're just trying to look to, look to some part-time positions. The Parks and Rec Department. These are all 999s and 552, so they're 825 an hour.
Is there a limit on how many, or just, we just leave it open?
There is a budget, there is a number budgeted for the department. I don't have that actually with me right now. I know that we had a couple that left. And again, as you saw, there were three full-time positions that resigned just recently in Charles's department, so he is working to fill those with some part-time positions for the interim.
Does he, how does, usually, does he run?
We typically...
He doesn't run out of time with those part-time guys in summer, does he?
They, he typically does not if they are a seasonal employee. The numbers 999 and 552 actually are the total number of hours that those individuals work.
And that's it, and that's it, so once they reach that point, then that's it, they're going to go somewhere else.
Absolutely.
So does this include our lifeguards as well?
No, the lifeguards, we already have that one, we approved that at our last meeting. We have approved that, it's been posted out on our website, we haven't had a lot of traction yet, but it's usually after spring break. So we actually will put another shout-out on Facebook and social media, but Charles just, unfortunately, people don't really start looking for those summertime jobs. As you saw, a lot of those lifeguards that, you know, they're just not coming back. Some of them have been here for several years and have done that job, and they're graduating college now and moving on, so.
I do know some that are interested, and I think they're taking the class, the Popper and Tulsa and Moskowitz, and I think that class is imminent, and then I think once they've completed that, they will be applying. Is there any question, they can't apply until they complete that course?
Yeah, well, they just have to have that sort of vacation.
So they are taking a class and they're ready to come on.
And I know that class is something that, well, let's keep on the subject, talking about lifeguards, so.
You're right.
I've got some ideas on that.
Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Department staff.
Can you swim, you know CPR? I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number 13, discussion possible action to lift the moratorium to advertise and recruit a director of planning and development in the managerial department.
As you know, Johnson did resign his position, and we got that notice just, I guess, the beginning of last week, but nonetheless, we'd like to be able to start recruiting for that position.
Motion.
Second.
Further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 14, discussion possible action to hire a driver in the Soliderus Department.
I think we've got a live one on the hook. And he is, his name is John Glasby, G-L-A-S-B-Y, and the recommendation is to hire him as entry-level position, it's at T-113, and at starting range of that position, which is 1394.
So there is no more of this, anything above in that, in that range, I mean, we don't have any flexibility once...
There could be, he has a Class A CDL, but he is fresh out of school, doesn't have any endorsements or anything like that, so the recommendation is just a matter of entry level, the beginning of that range, so very simple, very straightforward.
And if it was different, I mean, I guess we have some flexibility to...
We have the flexibility, because a Class A CDL driver that may have, you know, the brake endorsement, or taker endorsement, or a lot of different endorsements, you know, that has 10 years of driving experience, would be something, that would be very competitive. You know, Chris has to work within his drivers that he has now, but he would have the flexibility to say that, hey, we need to pay that guy, you know, 1450 an hour, or whatever it may be. But that is the flexibility.
I would like to make, like to make a motion to approve as recommended.
My second.
Further discussion? No, roll call.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Item number 15, discussion possible action on the adjustment to the bank reconciliations for old outstanding checks dated prior fiscal year of July 1st, 2019 through June 30, 2020. City Treasurer?
This is housekeeping. It's, there's a total of $3,292.61. This is housekeeping, it's, there's a total of $3,292.61 of either stale or dated checks that need to be credited, debited cash and then credited to the general fund. Most of the checks are a small dollar amount, some of them come from, you know, deposits, not returns, some of them come from court, court of a dollar, as far as stale, they go back to, the oldest one is around April of 2012, so...
We weren't actually given that in our package. Are we supposed to...
A list of checks?
Yeah.
I have a list here, it's the one that, look at, I need to bring it back, I mean, so it's basically just...
Is there a date discrepancy, or wrong date on here, for June 30, 2020?
It's just a part of this, this kind of weird...
This counter...
Well, they're not stale yet.
They're not stale yet.
Does that mean, like, from a banking standpoint, we have to pay them?
I think they're just...
They're still paying.
Fiscal year.
Well, still dated check after, after six months is... The question was, what's it mean when it's a stale dated check, and from a banking standpoint, after six months, the bank has no obligation to cash that check, and so, you know, it could be, you know, possibly negotiated to reissue, but there's no obligation there for a stale check, plus it also makes it accounting, journal entry issue, you know, there's a beginning and end of everything.
Keep carrying over everything.
Marty, what did you say that total was?
They had the list, it was $3,292.61.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir?
So these are checks that the city has written that haven't been cashed?
Correct.
So does that money go to the uncollected funds, state funds, or...
Unclaimed property?
Unclaimed property, I'm sorry, yeah.
I don't know. Either way, we would clear it back into our general fund and then reissue back to...
Reissue checks, yeah.
So, we would have to follow through on confirming whether that's required or not.
That's usually what happens with checks that aren't cashed, they have to pay it into the unclaimed.
You might be entitled to millions later.
Don't you always check the newspaper?
Or at least $32,000 bucks, right?
Thank you.
So you give this to the general manager?
Other questions?
Come in.
Table isn't till we clean, until we look at it?
Well, you can definitely say that they cash back, and either go to unclaimed or to the state general fund, depending on attorney's review if you like.
Well, it would go back to the general fund either way, because we would write a check from the general fund, then to the state if it goes to unclaimed property.
So it's only to go through this first step one of this process? Okay, I will make a motion to approve as recommended.
Motion second, further discussion, roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number sixteen, is proposed executive session.
No move.
Roll call.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
It is 11:20, so we have a motion to...
So... Roll call?
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, I would like to, now, Mr. Captain Kenny Barnes has made it here, I'd like to present to him meritorious award, has been recognized for his meritorious service and the performance of his duty of acting in a rescue on February 7th, 2020. Any of you to come up, please?
Can I get a picture, because we got pictures of...
Sure.
We did that while y'all were back there.
Did you get a picture already?
Yeah.
We've done it here, yeah. We know what you've been doing, we got a gas bag.
Are we going to stand on your tiptoes like they did?
I tried your bed on a gas, too.
Yes.
Glad I didn't leave anything else in.
Okay, item number eighteen, discussion possible action related to presentation of the cyber security terrorism assessment. Hearing nothing, we will move to item number nineteen, discussion possible action related to the 2021 contract with IAFF Local 4099. Hearing nothing. Number twenty, discussion possible action related to the 2021 contract with FOP Lodge Still nothing. Item number twenty-one, discussion on mid-month special meeting?
The 16th?
Yes.
Spring break?
Yes.
Sounds like it may be necessary.
Do we need to put these items back on there, or, I mean, since we hit the table, we need to bring these back up, or?
They will not automatically come back up, tabling is what we're forcing them to come back.
Is anyone going to be traveling on the 16th?
Wish.
No, Jake, you take me with you.
I will be available, but those of you with smaller children in school, another problem?
And I just, actually, Mayor, I think it's important to know that, you know, we really know, of course, we know that you guys are all out here, and we have the utmost respect for each and every one of you guys and what you guys do, but it's also, from our standpoint, very, I think, important that we have kind of a fiscally responsible position to stand with before we make any decisions in regards to those items, is that fair?
That is fair, and by this time next month, we will know a lot more about our numbers. Hearing nothing else?
I don't know, I just said mid-month, though.
Okay.
Seventeenth, sixteenth.
Sixteenth, mid-month. So mid-month, on the 16th, seven o'clock, and then the last item is the... No moves? Roll call.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.